Six o'clock, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. You'll please stand, and we're gonna have Ms. Hartman do the invocation.
All right. Dear Heavenly Father, we are profoundly grateful to be here tonight, both in person and virtually, as people who love and serve our city. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll give you the picture.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Just to order some new members here tonight, it looks like, I'm gonna make one little announcement here, this is, I do this most meetings. This has to do with citizens' announcements, so if you have some announcements you'd like to make tonight, I need you to sign up, or if you don't mind, if you haven't done so, you can still do so. Citizens who wish to address any council on any matter may sign up to talk to us at this time, prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. No discussion or decision will be made or taken by the council on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay? That's by state law, and that's not by our choice. So anyway, most of you know that, and we'll keep it from there. Citizens' comments. I guess I'm gonna go all the way to the bottom. Do you hear me?
You're not first, you're last, right?
Hey, Dalton. We'll do this.
I just wanna say, in my limited looking into home rule for the city, I have, I, my personal opinion is that for the betterment of the City of Morgan's Point Resort and the citizens, I think we should go home rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got two minutes for next time. Dalton, I think there's some presentations you're looking for here.
Yes, I'd like to bring Shirley and, if everybody wants to come, since they all got awesome t-shirts on.
Sure.
Yeah, there you go. So Shirley Clark and everybody, they actually kicked off the Bus Fest this year, and we invited them out to kinda just talk a little bit about the success of it, and I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, I appreciate your time, I appreciate y'all having us here this evening. My name is Shirley Clark, I'm the producer of Texas Bus Fest, and these are my friends, and very grateful, here's Becky Fairley, Esha Leatherman, and our photographer director, Janet Taylor. And what we are is a community of bus owners, Volkswagen vintage bus, and we also like to camp, and this city has provided us a wonderful venue and opportunity to camp with all of our friends. But not only is it the reason we camp, just to see our friends and all, we also were driven by a resident of this town long ago by the name of Paul Smith, still a resident here, who wanted to fundraise for the police department here at Morgan's Point, and we were camping at local Corps of Engineer parks, and going to a show in Temple, and a lot of buses were camping, and he said, "What if we have a bus camp out and show to raise money?" And we said, "Sure, we're coming." And that first year, I believe, we raised about $900. It was a time when defibrillators were a new thing, and every squad car needed one for protection and assisting the community, people of the community. And so Paul continued for nine years, starting in 2004. Paul Smith held this event for the generosity of this community, first in the ballparks, and then at Oakmont Park on a beautiful bluff. The city has continued over the years, and we are grateful to improve Oakmont Park and the bluff overlooking the lake, and it's just a wonderful place that we have done. And so we're here tonight to say we appreciate so much the generosity of this community, the support they've given us in allowing us to come. This last year, including Paul's nine years, this was our 18th year to gather here at Morgan's Point Resort, is also our 18th year to donate. We weren't able to come in 2020 because of our friend COVID, whatever, but we were able to online still raise over $1,000 and send it to the police department, just from those that still could afford during that hard time. This past year, we had over 50 buses in attendance, around 112, 15, 20 people attended, and this year, we were very proud and happy to send the Morgan's Point Police Department $4,200 to the police department. And appreciate to this community. I look forward, and now on a-
On a citizen's, maybe honorary citizen's note, I would like, appreciate if one of your cleanups still remains on the second weekend in October. That's how we clean up the park, and we make, pardon me, damn sure we leave your park nice, picked up, and litter free. That's very critical. So we would also, if there is a reduction in those quarterly cleanups, we would very much appreciate one of them being on the second weekend in October, because that's when we'll be back. Thank you very much. Y'all have a safe trip.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate y'all being here. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I just have one thing to add, and if you're in need of rain, we will bring that as well.
There you go.
And on, you know, and on that note, this was the first year that it did not rain, correct? Yeah. And you know, and while we, while our police department, the city greatly appreciates, you know, the donations, you know, more importantly, more important than the money and the donations, we appreciate the family and the environment and the atmosphere they bring to the community. You know, we'll definitely work on, you know, communicating that, you know, more, that's one of our kind of messages, but we definitely appreciate it, and thank y'all, and look forward to this year.
And I wanted to tell you ladies one thing, and I got a chance to talk to a couple of you before, they leave our park immaculate. It is just amazing how many of them are there, and they just police that park beautifully. I notice I use the word "police," the park beautifully there, and we appreciate that so much. You're such good stewards of our park, and we want you to know how much we appreciate that.
Okay, thank y'all. Moving right along. We have finally reached the destination in Morgan's Point, and we may have the opportunity, or looks like we have the opportunity to declare ourselves a home rule community. By doing this, should we go through with it, and of course, it's up to the citizens, and it has to be voted upon, but it would allow us to spread our wings a little bit, get away from the direct control of the state on everything we do, gives us some flexibility on several things. So Dalton, would you like to say something on this right here as we go through on it?
Yeah, this is just the beginning. This is by no means, you know, if council adopts this tonight, both the resolution and the ordinance forming the charter, this is just the beginning. This process is going to extend for the next few months, going on into the November election cycle, where the Morgan's Point Resort residents will vote on the charter that is created. And so this is something that, I don't have the statistics on me, a lot of cities who reach that 5,000 kind of threshold, this doesn't mean that anything is going bad or good, it's just kind of that next step in the evolution of kind of governance, and it gives the power really to the people on this. So kinda jumping into it really, the starting point is to self-declare the 5,000 population. We have some metrics, you know, that we've chosen that reflect that, multiple metrics on that. Once council approves or self-declares that, then an ordinance is created that establishes the Charter Commission comprised of 15, no more than 16 residents. Council is not involved in that process. Well, let me back up. Council is involved in the process, so each council member picked two to three members to serve on that committee, and the names that we have, we didn't put them in there because we were confirming all of them, but the names that the council members have that they'll read off did accept. Once that's formed, then they're gonna meet up until the deadline, or till the point of, we'll call it no return, where they will approve the charter, it'll come back to council to set the election date, and then the next process, you know, starts. During that time, it's gonna be heavy community involvement. It's not just something that's fire and forget, it's not something that council just decides on. It really is a community effort on that, and I think that's what makes this, one community so unique, but also so powerful, so.
To start the process, we will need to have a motion to consider Resolution Number 20, 22-01, the first one of the year, basically declaring that we are, have reached the population of 5,000 people or more.
I'd like to move that we open it up for a little discussion, you know, just so we can-
Just a motion first, and then-
That is my motion, to open it up for discussion. Needs a second or it dies. Okay, go ahead. No, go ahead, Bruce.
I just wondered, what method did we use to certify our population? I mean, I know the census hasn't come out yet, but I know there's other ways, another avenue.
Correct. So the conservative method we took, we have, and this is active trash users, so solid waste users in the city, we have an active user of 1,860. There's an audit that we do every year, that's kind of our recent audit, so there are, there's a margin of error on that, more on, we probably have more than 1,860. The national average of the census for basically 2015 to about July of 2021 was 2.53, which obviously falls under the 5,000 mark. However, the Texas average is 2.85, which would put it at about 5,300 member or resident citizens. If you take the average of the 2.53 and the 2.85, it comes out to 2.69, which is right at 5,003. That doesn't factor in utility, that doesn't factor in growth, that doesn't factor in any, it doesn't factor in condos, they're on commercials, so it doesn't take that into account. So those were the initial metrics that we, conservative metrics that we used across the board, using actual census data with our actual trash residential.
So does this have to be, I mean, we're saying that we're 5,000 or more, when does that number become a hard number? In other words, in the process, at what point, if somebody challenges that, do we be able to say, okay, this is-
So based off of the statute, it is, the city, as long as they self-declare 5,000, then they can start, they greenlight the process to go through. Don't know, I haven't heard anything as far as hard numbers, that's not something that I'd ever heard about. As long, the statute basically says, self-declare 5,000, then you can start the process. Again, we didn't factor in any of the growth metrics or anything, so. Self-declare is kind of that key legal term that allows the process to begin.
And I was gonna say, Dalton spent quite a bit of time with me, I know he spent quite a bit of time doing numbers, and I spent several hours on numerous sites, you know, coming up with this. One of the things, just because you know how I nerd out on numbers, there's 405 cities in Texas over 5,000, and 352 of them are home rule. So it is a pretty popular way, you know, for the citizens to have more control in their city, and cities seem to be wanting to do it. The methodology, and I checked it, also I checked with Central Texas Council of Governments, it used to be, and Dalton had said this too, it used to be the state, you had to have two verifiable methodologies, you know, to come up with quantitative figures on how you arrived at it. The state doesn't require that at all anymore, so it's up to us to do it, and I think he's come up with the one way that he said, the garbage, because we can't tie it into water taps because commercial, new construction has all that. We can tie it into garbage, even though there are some residents that aren't primary residents, but then we have the condos, two sets of condos, where a lot of permanent residents are there, and they have commercial contracts, so counting those. We also, you know, just recently, Keelis had the two subdivisions, so I'm pretty confident about it, I'm confident about that, using it as a basis, the garbage. Also, in looking specifically for Morgan's Point Resort growth rate, they have that at 2.92. So that's a, that's a figure that we can use to say, we're at 2022 now, you know, so we have a whole extra year to add 2.92 on the growth of it. So I would like to add that, that that was another methodology that we used, is going up the Morgan's Point specific growth rate, adding that on, and then by the time this process is, we'll be in 2022. So I had a lot of questions, and you know what a, you know how I am as a stickler for everything, but I think in talking to Dalton, talking to the COG, he said he thought our methodology, this was Jim Reed at the COG, who's kind of my contact person for all things government, and he was pretty confident about the methodology we used, he said it sounded sound to him, so is there any other discussion anyone else has, or?
No, I'd like you, I've done a whole lot of research on it, and I'm confident that, you know, we're gonna do it because the average population growth for Morgan's Point over the last four years has been 128 residents. So, you know, and I went to some of the places he went to, to get the average household and growth rate, 2.92. So yeah, no, I'm-
And then also too, we use the low end of everything, the very conservatively low, it's try, what we try to, you know, tend to how to do it. We pulled the Belcad 2021 certified totals, and 1,858 single-family residential, 250 single, or residential mobile. That's well over 2,000 single-family residential rate, far below what we even projected on the 5,000. So that's another kind of just confirming factor on more, probably the high end, but again, we didn't want to show those metrics.
I'm, yeah, I'm very comfortable with the methodology that we came up with. I would like to, and I can do this in the form of a motion, and so I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2022-01, and if we could, Dalton, on that section four, could we add that other, taking our population figure and having a yearly growth rate specifically for Morgan's Point at 2.92? That just adds another methodology, and it's one that we're using.
Yes, ma'am, that sounds good.
Any further discussion? Do I hear, do I hear, is that all in favor?
Do we have a second?
Oh, I thought Bruce seconded it, I'm sorry, did he?
No, he seconded the motion.
Oh, you did? Well, I seconded the motion, you seconded the discussion, but we have to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just go through the motion and second again.
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry.
It's hard with masks.
All right, you got your first one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Okay, based on that, the next item on there, which is item number 20, 22-01, one, I guess, is we're gonna form a charter, we're forming the charter. There is a list, I think each council person has a list, of the people that they either suggested, and the other council members that suggested, and so I'd like to look that over, have any questions on it? Otherwise, we need to have a motion to accept that.
Could we read the list out loud, so our citizens know who's on, you know, the commission? And then also, if you're here from the commission on this list, because I know I see a couple people that are on this list, if you want to stand up, just so we can kind of get a look at you, and other citizens can know who is gonna be working on this commission. This commission is the one that will develop with the help of, you know, legal, you know, legal people, they will help develop this city charter, so they will be writing your city charter. So these are the people you want to, you know, be able to pick their brains, give them your thoughts, so kind of nice if you're here, you know, Dennis calls your name.
Pick their brain, Jim, because they haven't moved through the process.
Yeah. Pick, yeah, pick your brains after their first meeting. There you go.
And so how the committee, or how the council member shows, was they, they basically, each council member picked two to three names, there were some duplicates. Based off of the state statute, it's a minimum of 15, because of our population, every, for every 3,000 residents, you can have an additional person, so we put a max of 16 on there. And I'll just read down the list. Jeff Davison, Gary Green, James Snyder-
Stand up.
Jim Mandurki, Mark Allen, Mike Pinkert-
Stay up.
Dwayne Gossett, Billy Osborne, Lynn Mylum, John Corsi, Alex Lozoya, hopefully I said that right, sorry if I butchered your name, Billy Wigley, Dr. Scott Mosher, Linda Bridges, Les Minor, and Andrew Bill.
All right. Thank y'all for agreeing to serve here.
And again, this is step one, this, you know, this committee is not gonna fall into the shadows, and you're never gonna hear from them, because again, this is not something that the committee does, and it comes back to council, and council, you know, adopts it with the web of a wand, you know, it goes to ballot. The entire city will vote on this process, and we will communicate this over the next year, so.
And this will be an ongoing project, because we have to do it by November, so it's not something we can, we can put on a back burner and say, well, we'll talk about it later. We're not, we are not kicking a can down the road, I promise you on this.
And there's new, there'll be numerous meetings with citizens to kind of educate them, there'll also be, everyone receives a copy of the charter, registered voters all get a copy of this charter, so that they'll be able to see it and read it, you know, prior to going and voting, and it's strictly in the hands, the council doesn't pass this, you pass this, if you want it or not, it'll be up to you what you want. But a lot of work will go into it, and we're gonna keep these committee members pretty busy.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of creating this commission, and having these people that we just don't just rev, or often just rev?
I mean, if we adopt ordinance number 2022-01, setting up the Charter Commission to look into the home rule, and with the 16 members that our city manager just read, I'd like those names put on the ordinance.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Thank you, folks. Okay, item four, and it has to do with the minutes from the last meeting. This is under a consent agenda, so I just need somebody sort of reading them. Does anybody have any amendment to the minutes? If you want to hear, motion to accept them as they stand. Now, soon as I'm ready, I'll look at them. I'll motion to accept the minutes as printed. Bruce, make the motion?
Second.
Larry? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed? Motion passes? Okay, now we're gonna go, just update. Dalton, do you have anything on the people?
I do, from the ladies auxiliary. This is their January report, they're gonna meet on the 13th, this is this Thursday, 6:00, it's a social right here, and everybody's welcome, welcome to bring guests, and their next fundraiser is at Alaskan Cruise, it's open to anybody, you don't have to be a member, no a member, you know, it's, it's open to the whole community and friends, and so it's gonna be on the Carnival Cruise Line, it's gonna be August the 8th through the 16th, and you can get in touch with your travel agent to get information on the cruise. And the auxiliary wanted to thank everybody for their support in 2021, and they look forward to 2022. Their officers are President Karen Steigner, First Vice President Barbara Lyneum, Second, Judy Dillon, Secretary Mary Shockley, Treasurer Rebecca Hutton, Parliamentarian Vacant Historian Charlene Terant, First, Second, and Third, Fourth Board Members Linda Morris, Lynn Zimmerman, and Jeanette Grabman, those are their officers for 2022. And I may do this when you do your city manager's report, but Dalton, I did want to ask you on this home rule, if you know an approximate price of what, you and I talked about that, but I thought that might be good to get that out.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So, you know, on average, you're looking at anywhere between 50 and 60, you know, depending, 50 and 60,000, you know, and I know that sounds like a lot, and I know some of the kind of concerns comes up about roads, which I'll kind of talk about in some of the updates. As we've kind of talked about before, and during the coffee with the city managers, 60,000 is not gonna cover roads, you know, we're gonna continue to work on roads, it's not gonna impact it, we're gonna have more of a financial statement and kind of financial, you know, standpoint, we are, we are doing well financially, Carrie is diligently working through that, we're putting together a lot of good material to kind of really show where everybody's at, and we're confident everybody's gonna see that as well, so. So about 50 or 60,000, you know, give or take. And again, this is, this is a strong committee, this is a great community, typically in the lot, you know, the cities with love of community, usually the commissions go pretty well, and there's not a lot of issues, so.
Dalton, anybody else, anything else?
Yep, that's all.
Anybody out there have any, the department? Okay.
I'm the president of the Morgan's Point Resort Cops, and we also want to thank the city for attracting us in 2021, our inception, basically, last part of 2021, when it's back in section here. We also, for December, we had, along with the VFA, we did a Santa program, and we served four, there were four families from here that applied, and they got, and all that. And then also, we did Blue Santa for the firefighters, and that, it was marvelous, I mean, from, the amount, oh, my god, my living room was stuffed with stuff, I mean, dolls and toys and trucks and stuff that appeared, and it went really, really well. We had a lot of extra stuff. I found myself, I was going to drive to these, and people that I know that have, I mean, that work here, and then giving them here, you know, such a fabulous employee, you know, bless your children, bless your grandchildren, I mean, children, but it went really, really well. Our next fundraiser is going to be, we had donated to us from my neighbor, and he is a member of Welsh Magister's made books, it is a beautiful handmade book, and it's king-size, but in size, and we are gonna do a wrap of that, and all of those proceeds will go to the police. And we're trying to do something with him right now, because they're trying to renovate their shooting range, and so we're gonna, if they need any help with that, or sponsoring any part of that, we're ready to work with him, to talk to you about that. And so, we're just looking forward to a big year, we've got a full schedule planned, and we're looking forward to, whether y'all support us, have a good time.
Appreciate y'all, all the support, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dalton?
Yeah, we had a short, a shorter, thank you, Mary, we had a short agenda tonight, so I could do about two hours worth of city manager updates.
Right. Did you say two minutes?
Two hours.
Two minutes, I heard two minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes of fame. No, we, the team has really been working hard this, obviously kicking off this new year, we're spending a lot of time implementing a lot of kind of new things that are up and coming over the next six months. We'll definitely have more to follow on that, whether that's demonstrations, or, you know, some, we're working on kind of a, I'd say a state of the city, the mayor and I are working on right now. So more to follow on that. As far as big projects, the water storage tank is still on track, we haven't heard any news, so as, since, as far as we're concerned with that, we should be starting to go to competitive bid, hopefully at the end of this month. We're applying for a grant for two generators, one for an SB Ascended Bill III requirement over at the, the storage tank down off of Morgan's Point Road, and we're also gonna apply for one for the, for the new project, or the new bill, to see if we can offset some of the expenses off that through grants. So we're working with TDM and FEMA through, through one of our sources on, to try to get something on that, so hopefully that'll come through. So hopefully that'll come through. The survey results are still on my computer and they're pulled up and we're starting to put some graphical images to them to try to compile what some of those, some of those data points look like. So Carrie and I are kind of working on that. Definitely appreciate the patience on that. We definitely don't want to rush it, we want to make sure that we get the information out and then we'll put all the raw data out there as well, so all the internet's loose so the world can, can come up with things that we never could dream of. Roads, we are going to have an updated kind of roadmap from our, I'd say, our recent road maintenance plan. They knocked out quite a bit, don't get me lying, on the tonnage of asphalt. Obviously, there's not much we can do during the cold, we don't want a hot mix when it's cold out, it's just a waste. So we're going to be kicking off roads again in, in the springtime. We'll have a more, more of an update on that. Again, most of these are going to be Band-Aids until we can really kind of get a mobility plan or some other infrastructure plans to see what's going to be the best course of action for that. So over the next coming months, we'll start, we really need to, you know, kind of work on strategic planning and what that looks like, so kind of start thinking about some of that. Let's see. Really, right now, a lot of stuff is, some, we'll just talk about some of the stuff on the horizon and then I'll turn it back over to the mayor. We're working on a new digital agenda management slash code of ordinance site and that's going to kind of help us, one, streamline our current process, but also when we, when council adopts a new ordinance, instead of it taking forever or never showing up on the website, it's going to go there almost instantly. And so you're going to be able to see updates as they come out from council. We're working on a new permitting system that's going to be a lot more user friendly once we get there. It's going to be more digital, less issues with paperwork, better authorization, you know, trails. Along those lines of the permitting, we're really working on our processes kind of internally with staff and with our team. We want to make sure that we provide the best customer service that we can and so we're identifying checklists, identifying application processes, make sure that we, again, are providing the best service that's expected from our residents. Some, more of the financial side, we're, we got a new server. Our server was about eight years old, so it was due for a new one, so that was budgeted for last year. That got implemented, we're starting to migrate everything over, so we're about to migrate all of our financial stuff over to that, so that's a little bit of a process. All of this, we're trying to do while minimizing some downtime, so we definitely appreciate, you know, citizens patience, you know, if we do close for a day. I think we do have Fri, is it Friday? Yeah, this Friday, we're going to be open, but credit cards is probably going to be down during one of the final migrations, so just try to get, you know, with everybody before. We're going to post it again if it's not already posted, so we'll make sure we communicate. Thank you, Jim Ann, and everybody else who makes, makes that stuff happen. We're also working on implementing some new payroll software that's going to help time clock, or timekeeping. We still do everything digitally, or manually. We still do Excel spreadsheets and time sheets with pen and paper and then it has to manually get input in. It's going to help us better track projects and better track grants and, and just really make staff time more efficient instead of spending a lot of time doing payroll. Payroll can take anywhere, you know, upwards of four to six hours on something, so, and that's every two weeks. So those are a lot of things kind of happening behind the scenes with the team. What that's doing is really just helping us kind of lay the foundation going forward and helping us make sure that we continue to provide the service and, and getting the vision of council and the mayor and, and kind of pressing forward and, and what the community wants. So it's just going to help us do better, better, betterer.
I still want to thank Dalton, we had a pretty good turnout for our coffee with the city manager.
We did.
Friday.
We did.
And I was really, I was, thank y'all for, if one of you were there, thank y'all for being here. Very informative, it's very informal, and if you just have a chance, it's seven and nine, and I think we're going to have another one in another two, three weeks.
Yes, so, no, thank you for bringing that up, Mary. No, we did, we did kick off the new one this year. It's going to be the first and third Friday of every month. So not every other week, the first and third Friday of every month. Start at seven AM, we typically end at eight. I know I can get long-winded and I let everybody else talk and I think we went to like nine thirty the other day, but I get paid to do this, so it doesn't, doesn't bother me. But it's great, we see a lot of, we see some new faces, we see some old faces, we see new conversation, we talk about new things. Folks have great ideas and again, it really helps us kind of gauge it. If it's a talk with the city manager day, it's great. If it's a talk at the city manager day, we still learn something and so we get the benefit both ways.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I know I used my three minutes, but I didn't want to leave out that Noel Schaefer got his EMS, so we're very, congratulations to him on that. And then, where's Todd back there? They're doing their first coffee with the cops this Friday from seven to nine. Are you bringing donuts? All right, gotta have donuts, right? So come in.
This Friday?
Oh, this Friday, this Friday from seven to nine, here. I'm looking at Becky going.
Seven to nine this Friday?
Seven to nine here. And so this is their first one, so let's give them a big showing and show up and ask the questions. Eat donuts with the cop. I think it should be donuts with the cop, but anyway. So anyway, we're all looking forward to doing that, too.
Okay, Dalton, you have anything else? We'll just start with you. Do you have anything that you want to finish up on, Donna?
Oh, I think I've done enough. Use my time.
Bruce, we'll go your way. I just want to say on this home rule thing, there's going to be a lot of information coming out as this thing progresses, so make sure y'all get involved in this. This is actually, as I said, putting more, more power into the hands of the citizens of the city. And so the more people we get involved in, the better it's going to be for the whole community. Also appreciate everybody coming out tonight with the rain and everything, it's kind of a nasty night, but it was great to see everybody here, thank you.
Good. Start with you, Sean.
I'm good.
You're good? Larry?
Thank everybody for coming out. Thing to remember on the home rule, the residency to make it or break it.
That's right.
It's in their, in their court now.
Robbie?
I'm good.
Are you, Larry?
I'm good tonight.
I don't have anything other than thank you everyone for coming out, we appreciate it. And like Larry said, Donna said, and Dalton, this home rule deal, the home rule is due for us, so we're not involved in it, other than we have to stay away from it, it's the citizens. So we're in the learning process too, so anyway, thank y'all for being here and hopefully we'll, we'll make this a better community for everybody. And y'all have a good night. I'll do my here, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Larry, in second.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, folks, for coming out.